Good evening, everyone. Happy St. Patty's Day. There are cookies up front. Help yourself. I call to order the Doylestown Borough Council meeting for Monday, March 17, 2025. And if we can all rise for the Pledge Allegiance.
The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of divided states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a special presentation with the mayor this evening. This will be honoring Heather Walton for her time on HARB. Hi, Heather.
Yes.
So we are honoring Heather Walton for 18 years of service on the Historical and Architectural Review Board.
Wow.
And Amy and Jen, our councilpeople who are architectural and historical mavens, are going to say a couple of words before. Come on up, Heather. Come out as well.
Heather, I'm so thrilled to talk about you. When I was on, so you've been on 18 years on HARB?
Well, HARB and Revitalization.
And Revive. And I sat on nine years with you on HARB. And my favorite parts about you and your expertise are, first, you had your real estate expertise, and you knew every single building and house in town. So when we were talking about any of the historical homes, you knew exactly where it was and what we were talking about, and could get, you gave great input. So thank you so much, and I loved being on HARB with you. So I, I hope you enjoy your retirement because HARB is a very hard board to be on. It's very labor-intensive. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And I had the good fortune of getting to serve with Heather as well on HARB for many years. There is, there are very few people who can, with her expertise, keep the purists in check and not let us go too hard on people and be realistic, but at the same time be able to, with kindness and determination and a place of knowledge, also be able to tell somebody that their design is terrible and they have to come back. And that is a really hard thing to do, and you have to be able to do it sometimes to be on HARB. And Heather always did it with so much aplomb and just kindness and compassion for the people coming before the board. And you were just a great role model in that way. And I just really appreciate you and appreciate all the work that you did with us and for us. And you've been such a valued member of just the volunteer community here as well as the HARB. So thank you so much. Hopefully I'll see you lying there. Yes, still, so, but thank you. And she really is, she really is that great, guys.
I was not expecting that.
And here is the formal presentation in appreciation for your dedicated service as a member of the Doylestown Borough Historical and Architectural Review Board 2007 to 2024. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you. That's beautiful.
Thank you.
It is beautiful, isn't it?
Yes. Come on.
Time with Larry.
Cuddle, cuddle.
We all have to getting close.
Yes.
Bye, Larry. That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you. So the next item is the approval of the minutes from February 24, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next is our mayor's report.
I have a report this evening on two items. First, this year's Easter events actually start on April 1st with the scavenger hunt. That goes through April 19th. Twenty-eight businesses in the borough will be hiding eggs in their stores, and youth can pick up their passbooks at Evolution Candy and go on an egg hunt. And when they're finished, the passbooks are returned to Evolution and entered into a raffle where people will win prizes. And the Broad Common Egg Hunt is April 12th. I think registration, Caitlin told me, is going to be, this starts this week, and the Easter bunny arrives on the 19th. Now, the second item, which is far from least this evening, tonight is a consequential evening for the borough because we are considering approving our 2025 comprehensive plan. The extensive planning process, which launched in May of 2022, which is not short of three years, involved our Planning Commission, the Bucks County Planning Commission, borough staff, public meetings, and extensive community engagement through online forums and public events. This plan represents our community's collective aspirations, capturing the spirit and potential of the borough as we move toward 2035. Through dedicated collaboration and thoughtful input from our residents, we have created a roadmap that builds upon the success of past plans and adapts to new challenges. This work represents thousands and thousands of hours of commitment to the shared goal of creating a vision for the borough. So now it is time for our Oscar thank yous. Our plan would not exist without the dedicated efforts of Jim Lannan and Gus Pareja, Chair and Vice Chair of our Planning Commission. I think everybody knows who Jim is. Doesn't have to raise his hand. Along with their volunteer team, Lynn Bush, Mary Ann Benninger, Nick Karamanichow, Andy Happ, who's here this evening, Heather Malley, Patricia West, and Kim Jacobson. The expertise of Bucks County Planning Commission Director of Planning Services, Mike Rodig, who is here this evening. And Lynn Lay drove the process. Borough staff was deeply involved, the most deeply involved being our zoning director, Karen Highland. And thank you to John Davis and crew. And of course, the involvement of our community through meetings, online input, and in-person events were vital to the process. It was with a heartfelt thank you that we approached the opportunity to approve the vision for Doylestown Borough for the next decade to come. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Our next item is public safety. And Mr. Brown, do you have a report?
Yeah, it's a quick one, though. We, we did meet and we had some spirited discussions over the course of the evening, but really nothing actionable. I just also wanted to note that our next preparedness seminar will be next Monday at 7 o'clock here, what to do, have, and go. And the fire company report showed 18 calls in the borough for what I know was a very, very busy month for them, on top of what's going to be another, probably another record year for them. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And our next is Public Works. Mr. Kinney, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. We have a number of items from the committee's meeting last week. First item on, on the agenda is 2526 Road Materials Bid. Bids were publicly opened and read on February 24, 2025 by the Bucks County Consortium for the purpose, purchase of road materials for the 2025-26 season. Based on these materials, the low bidder is Eureka. Last year's low bid was obtained from Eureka. The Public Works and Administration Committee has reviewed the bids and is recommending the award to Eureka Stone Quarry Incorporated. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it may do so by making a motion conditioned upon receipt of a properly executed performance bond in compliance with the bid specifications, and I so move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any comments? Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, do you have any other items?
I do, yes. The next item is the 2025 milling proposal. It is recommended that the Borough Council award the 2025 milling contract based on a CoStarz contract proposal to A Giuliani Company Incorporated at $46,604.83. CoStarz contractor is, as I understand it, is a pre-approved contract which obviates the need for competitive bidding based on staff's recommendation. And A Giuliani had previously provided milling services for the borough, not last year, but previous couple of years before that. So as a CoStarz contractor, they've been vetted by the state of Pennsylvania, by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I'm sorry, and it eliminates a lot of administrative steps. If council wishes to award the bid to A Giuliani Company Incorporated, it can do so by making a motion to the award and the project conditioned upon receipt of a properly executed performance bond, I'm sorry, and compliance with the bid specifications, and I so move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Jared. And any comments? Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of other quick items. Pardon me. Doylestown Borough completed its sale of surplus equipment, which was open for public bid. The sale ended on March 10, 2025, resulting in a total of $51,845. After final approval by the council at this meeting, the equipment will be released for public, and I move that the council authorize the release of these items that were bid on and sold.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Any comments from the public?
Just to say thanks to, thanks to Dave and his team, this is the most successful auction sale we've ever had. Threw a lot of the stuff left over from the old Borough Hall and really, really did a deep dive on some of the equipment we've been storing down there. And we were able to get a nice return on it, so, so well done to David.
Is it a record amount?
Oh, by far.
Yeah.
By far.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
And the last item is the Public Works Monthly Report, which is in your package. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kinney. The next is Community and Government Affairs. Mr. Bell is absent this evening, and Mr. O'Hanlon will be giving the report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Honored to give my first one in my first official meeting. See how good I am at reading. Hopefully not that bad. We had a few things come up in the meeting, and number one being the Farmers Market License Agreement. Attached, you'll find the above-referenced agreement, which provides for the Saturday morning farmers market on Hamilton Street by the Bucks County Food Shed Alliance. All provisions of the agreement are unchanged from previous years. The Community and Governmental Affairs Committee has reviewed the agreement and is recommending its approval. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I move to do so.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kinney. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Let you know their opening day is April, April 19, I believe. Know their, it's their 25th anniversary, is it? 30th anniversary? They have a big anniversary coming up, so, 30th. So they'll be doing some nice celebrations there.
All right, we have another fun one here. This is for the Stage United Concert Series, which got approved last month for the regular concert series, but this one is for a request for alcoholic beverages at the events. So Stage United is requesting Borough Council's authorization to sell alcoholic beverages at their upcoming concerts at Broad Commons Park across the street. On May 1, 2025, and May 29, 2025, Borough Ordinance 1979-7 permits the consumption of alcohol, alcoholic beverages in public parks when specifically authorized by Borough Council. Stage United will assume responsibility for coordinating with the alcohol vendors, ensuring that they secure the necessary permissions from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. The vendor will also be responsible, responsible for managing the identification process. Signage and fencing will be installed to keep alcoholic beverages within the boundaries of the event. Stage United will first reach out to borough businesses to gauge their interest in participating to support responsible consumption. The sale of alcohol will be advertised in advance to discourage attendees from bringing their own alcoholic beverages, as we are not requesting permission for BYOB. The Committee and Governmental Affairs Committee has reviewed the request and is recommending approval. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jared. Any comments from council?
Just want to emphasize what Councilmember O'Hanlon mentioned is that this is not an approval for people to bring their own alcohol to the Stage United events. These are going to be controlled atmosphere where the vendors are going to, people will get a wristband or something else that identifies their ability to purchase alcohol, and they're going to, it's my understanding that they're going to have to stay in a designated areas. They can't actually bring, so there'll be a designated area where people can, can consume alcohol, but it's not going to be spread out across Broad Commons Park. So if I'm correct, I just wanted to make sure that that's, that my understanding is correct.
Yeah, it'll be very apparent with bright orange. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll just, I'll add to that comment that it's, it's mentioned in there as well, but the ability to have local businesses be a part of this is, is a great opportunity, I think, as well.
Any questions or comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then I think you have one more.
Yes, I do. Yeah. And this next one is the request to raise funds for the pump track. Please see the attached proposal to host borough-sponsored events aimed at raising funds for the pump track paving project. All funds raised will be processed and accepted through our Parks and Recreation website. The Community and Governmental Affairs Committee has reviewed the request and is recommending approval. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any comments from council? Liz, do you have a plug?
I'll just say thank you, and we are well on our way gathering sponsors for the pump track project and GoFundMe if you have any questions. Thanks.
And there is a GoFundMe.
Yes.
As well. Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Mr. O'Hanlon.
I can read.
Get a shamrock.
You get a cookie.
Works.
Next, we have zoning planning. Ms. Jared, you have quite a list on your agenda.
As usual. Yes. Well, it's been three years in the making, folks, and here we are. So at the meeting for the Borough of Doylestown Planning and Zoning Department Committee, sorry, we first on our agenda have the consideration of Resolution 2025-5, adopting the comprehensive plan. Attached, please find Resolution 2025-5, adopting the proposed Doylestown Borough Comprehensive Plan, DB 2035. A copy of the plan and comments received are also attached. Led by the Borough Planning Commission and Bucks County Planning Commission, development of the plan included widely distributed public surveys, internal surveys, participation by the borough's volunteer boards, more than 1,000 hours of volunteer time, and several well-attended public meetings. Throughout the process, the public and the planning commission identified three overarching principles: equity and diversity, stewardship and character, and sustainability. These principles were used to guide a selection of six themes: community character and history, economic opportunity and diversity, housing diversity and attainability, mobility and connections, sustainable community, and center of civic, cultural, and recreational activity. The municipality's planning code requires that the comprehensive plan be adopted by resolution following a public meeting held by the planning commission, distribution to the county planning agency, school district, and adjacent municipalities, and a 45-day public comment period. The attached comprehensive plan, which is also available on the website for anybody that needs to look at it at home, has been updated to include the minor edits suggested during the public comment period. There have been no substantial changes to the comprehensive plan since the planning commission's recommendation for adoption. The Zoning and Planning Committee recommends that the council adopt the comprehensive plan as edited, with the understanding that the photo spanning pages 30 and 31 will be updated with a non-construction image. If the council is in agreement, Resolution 2025-5 can be passed by motion, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any comments from council?
Yeah, Madam Vice President, I just want to make a comment. In addition to echoing the mayor's Oscar awards there earlier, I won't repeat those, but, you know, I closely monitored the, the progress on this, and my personal thanks go out to everybody on the planning commission, the Borough Planning Commission that worked so hard on this, as the mayor said, and also to the staff of the Bucks County Planning Commission. I worked with Mike Rodig for, what, 15 years before I retired, when I was at the Bucks County Planning Commission, so I never had a doubt that we were going to get a quality document out of our planning consultants. So thanks, everyone, that were, was involved in this process.
I'd also like to add my thanks to everyone, including James, and everyone else who worked on this from every level. And I think it's a fantastic document, and I look forward to working on all that it lays out for us going forward.
Yes, I'd like to associate myself with remarks that the council members just made. This is a, it's a really remarkable document, honestly. It's clear and it's concise. It lays out the, the objectives of the community. It's a very readable document, and these aren't always that way. They can get gobbledygooked, and this one is not. This one is really something to read, and I encourage people who haven't read it to do so, and then to participate in the process going forward, anticipating that we're going to approve it, to, to move forward in our community and continue to make the improvements that we all want to see. So, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Can I have everyone stand who was involved with the comprehensive plan, please? I'm so proud of our town and all of you. It really is a huge accomplishment, and I keep it on my desk, and I pick it up once in a while and keep reading. There's tidbits in it that I miss when I read the whole thing at once. And it's, it, to me, it's like walking around our town and finding a new piece of architecture I haven't seen before. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll say mine, too, is dog-eared, and I have all those little, like, post-it, like, you know, things sticking out of it and everything, but it's all, like, exciting, like, with exclamation points on it and things. It's really exciting. It's great. You did great work.
And one other thing I forgot to mention. Mike, are we still on track with applying for the APAPA award for this document?
Yes.
Good. Thanks for, thanks to the Bucks County Planning Commission for putting that award application together. I think this is going to be a contender.
Yes, thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Nice. Okay, Ms. Jared, you have...
Well done, everybody.
Well done.
Next, we have, sorry, let me get there. The authorization to advertise ordinance eliminating on-street valet parking zones and licensing. Attached, please find the above-referenced valet parking ordinance eliminating the designated valet parking stand locations on public streets. The three valet zones located along State Street were designated in 2016, and a corresponding license requirement for valet operators was established. Use of these loading areas for valet stands has been found to interfere with the use of the areas for loading and unloading, for which they're set aside. The draft ordinance eliminates the designated on-street valet stand zones and related licensing. As a result, the valet service operations would only be permitted to and from private property and only if certain conditions are met. The Zoning and Planning Committee recommends authorizing advertisement of the ordinance. If council is in agreement with the recommendation, it may do so by motion, and I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments from council? Any comments from the public?
Just, actually, I was the, this ordinance was my idea, so it's interesting to see it go, but it was a, it was a, it was an idea, it was a pilot program. It predated, I think... It predated, I think, people don't remember, the time before Uber, but Uber didn't exist at the time, and I think that very much kind of made this obsolete fairly quickly. It ran for a few months. It didn't quite work out, and the impetus really came from a couple of the entities that front on these zones that were supportive of this when it first was created as an idea to help the parking situation, actually, you know, were concerned that there would be a valet operation because they really felt like it would be a negative. So that was really the clincher, to go ahead and just take this off the books altogether.
Well, Mr. Davis was the ideas man. Ms. Highland had to tolerate us interrogating her on every little bit about this, so it was not something that was just taken lightly. We actually staff retooled it a couple times for us, and were really patient and understanding with us, so thank you, Ms. Highland, too.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
And next, we have the zoning hearing report, which I will throw over to our associate, Ms. Highland.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. The zoning hearing board will be meeting later this week. They've got one application on their agenda. It's for 721 South Chubb Drive. The applicant is proposing a garage within the required side yard setback. The reasoning for that is just the ability to maneuver. If it were in a compliant location, you would not be able to maneuver a car into it. We've not received any public feedback for this application.
Thank you, Ms. Highland. Next, we have the Certificate of Appropriateness and the HARB recommendations. At its regular monthly meeting, the Borough of Doylestown Historic and Architectural Review Board, HARB, recommended the following. For a sign application, we had 24 North Main Street. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as presented. Next, we had 77 West Court Street for a sign. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as presented, with the exception that the posts be the same color as the porch posts with the chamfered edges as on the house. Sign panels be lower than the top of the sign posts, and an added architectural detail be added to the top of the posts that tie into the design of the home. The columns and cross brace will be the same color. For building applications, we had 50 South Clinton Street for a swim spa. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as presented, and the amendment of a trellis-type cedar fence added for privacy to be set back from the front of the house. Next, we have 39 West State Street for windows and exterior lighting. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as presented. The amendment of the front door having a mail slot and appropriate latching hardware will be replaced in kind. The windows will be one six-over-one window and one four-over-one windows, two, excuse me, four-over-one windows replaced in kind. Lighting is not included in the scope of the certificate. 43 East Oakland Avenue for a sign and exterior renovation. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as presented. Gutters on the shed addition be replaced with half-round downspouts, and new engineered cedar siding with four-light casement window with appropriate hardware as shown on the application to be installed. Next, 230 West Court Street for an addition. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as presented. And finally, 387 Lincoln Avenue for a chimney removal. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as presented. The zoning and planning committee recommends to council, that the council approve the applications in accordance with HARB's recommendation. If the council is in agreement, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Are you here for one of the applications? Which one?
24 North Main, the first one.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's exciting.
It's going to be a tea house, so I feel like the tea will have to stop.
Thank you. Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
And last, we have the code enforcement and building inspection reports in the packet. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. Next, we have environmental, environment, and recreation. Ms. Wykoff.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. And water and utility. Mr. LeRone.
Thank you. I have one action item and three informational items tonight, and I also want to welcome here with us tonight our chief water operator, Jerry Motoso, and he's, Jeremy Motoso, excuse me, and he's going to be here to answer any questions on some of the informational items. So the first thing that's on your agenda, and you've seen this in your packet, is Resolution number 2025-4, authorizing Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program grant application for the Spruce Street tank rehabilitation. You will recall that several months ago, we completed the rehabilitation of the Maplewood tank, and that was a resounding success, also a very expensive success, and the Spruce Street tank will be an equally expensive proposition. So we are going for this same amount of a grant application. I'm going to read the resolution where that number will come out, so I'm going to read this into the record. Resolution number 2025-4, Borough of Doylestown, County of Bucks, Pennsylvania. Resolution of the Borough of Doylestown authorizing an application to the PA Small Water and Sewer Program in the amount of $500,000 for the Spruce Street tank rehabilitation project, and designating the borough manager as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Borough of Doylestown and the Commonwealth Financing Authority. Excuse me. Be it resolved that the Borough of Doylestown, Bucks County, PA hereby request a PA Small Water and Sewer Program grant of $500,000 for a total project cost of $866,800 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the repainting and rehabilitation of the Spruce Street water tank. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate John H. Davis, Borough Manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Borough of Doylestown and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Goes on to say, "I, John H. Davis, duly qualified Secretary of the Borough of Doylestown, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of a resolution duly adopted by majority vote of the Doylestown Borough Council at a regular meeting held on March 17, 2025, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of the Doylestown Borough Council and remains in effect as of this date. Resolved, adopted, and approved the 17th day of March 2025 at a regular public meeting of the Borough Council of Doylestown Borough, and this is to be signed by Borough Manager John Davis, Council President John O'Brien, and Mayor Eleanor West." So I make a motion that, well, it was the recommendation of the Water Committee to Borough Council that we adopt this resolution, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then there's three things that aren't on your agenda, but the Water Committee met this month, and these things came, two of these things came up, actually, only one of them came up, two came up later, but I thought they were appropriate to bring before council and the public here. There, on March 13, there was a WHYY news article that the headline read, "Six Philadelphia-area water providers failed to meet Pennsylvania PFAS regulations." And it goes on to say, "Coatesville, Doylestown, Audubon, New Hope, and Salisbury Water Providers are among 22 that failed to meet state requirements to reduce the forever chemicals in drinking water." The problem with this article is that they mentioned Doylestown, but they don't say Doylestown Borough, and that's good because we're not in violation, but they mentioned Doylestown because one of the entities in violation is Central Bucks East High School, which has a Doylestown address, but it's in Buckingham Township. So I just wanted to clarify this for the record, and the good news is that although the water samples at Central Bucks East High School detected PFAS levels below the state standards, the high PFAS levels throughout the sampling period placed the schools out of compliance based on a rolling average. The Central Bucks School District is addressing this problem by putting individual under-sink filtration systems throughout the school. So it's good to hear that the school district is addressing that. So I just wanted to clarify that misinformation in this article for the record.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Jeremy is going to help me out with the next two items. At our committee meeting, Jeremy gave his monthly operations report, and he emphasized that, which is coming up on the screen now, and he emphasized that we are still very much in a drought situation here in southeastern Pennsylvania, and we still have mandatory water restrictions in effect in the borough.
Yes, that's correct, Dennis.
Okay, and did you want to add to, add for the information to the council and the public a little bit about the severity of the situation?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for having me here tonight. So as I expressed during our Water Committee meeting last week, we're seeing still record lows in precipitation for the year. I think January was the third lowest in rainfall on record in 131 years. We had a bit of an increase in February as far as rainfall, but that is not equating over to higher groundwater levels. During our meeting last week, I shared with everybody some of the tools that I use to monitor the drought situation, which Dennis requested I share here tonight. Pull up the first line. First link. So I use a combination of some federal agencies and Pennsylvania DEP websites that give a good picture of Pennsylvania and Bucks County in general as far as water levels, rainfall totals, and groundwater levels. Up on the screen now is the Pennsylvania DEP's drought monitoring map. The second slide that I used, I could have, next one. So this is the USGS website. That is a very useful tool for myself here. That doesn't seem to be popping up at the moment. Obviously, anybody can access these websites, you know, if they're interested to look for themselves, but this gives a good breakdown. There's different filters, and I have an account set up that'll actually send me alerts to groundwater levels if it goes below a certain point within Bucks County. There's a local monitoring well not too far from here that I monitor for the groundwater levels. And then on top of that, we also monitor our own well levels. So it's a combination of seeing the larger trend, you know, throughout the state and the county, and then more locally here in our own water system. And with that, we've determined that we're still very much in a drought right now, being that we are a groundwater-dependent system. You know, much of the recent rains have not really helped us in any significant way. So I've also been in close coordination with Doylestown Township, being that our two systems are so interdependent on each other. We felt very important to be kind of united front with keeping the mandatory restrictions in effect.
Very good. Does council or the public have any questions for Jeremy on this topic? Thanks for that report. I thought it was important, Madam Vice President, that the council and the public know where we are with the mandatory restrictions.
Just an aside, as in our PFAS remediation discussions upcoming, one of the things we'll be talking about is how in so doing we can be less groundwater dependent.
Dependent, right. Good point.
Yes, we're exploring ways to bring in some more surface water from local treatment plants, get off our dependency on the wells.
Yeah, and we'll be hearing more about that at the committee level from Jeremy and our engineers, Water Engineer, CKS Engineering, and then we'll be bringing that to the council as appropriate.
Yes.
And Jeremy, you mentioned one thing to me that maybe council might want to know about increasing costs of a particular item?
So I found this out Friday afternoon. This was after our meeting, but I'm starting to see a significant cost increase in some of our treatment chemicals. I was notified by our supplier Friday afternoon. We want to see about 44% increase in our sodium hydroxide, which is the main chemical we use for pH treatment. So I wanted to just share that and kind of give everybody a heads up that we're starting to see those price increases.
Jeremy, may I ask, was there an explanation? I mean, that's an outstanding cost increase, and did they explain why the cost went up so high?
So I was taken aback by how much of an increase that was. As I said, I found out this Friday afternoon. I've placed a call earlier today to our sales rep over at Chemical Supplier, but they have not gotten back to me yet. I do want to investigate why it is, you know, so high, where exactly along the supply chain is the, you know, they're seeing their increases, and maybe start exploring some other options as far as a different pH treatment or supplier.
Thank you.
Anything else that we need to know, Jeremy, since we have you here tonight?
Oh, that's a...
Okay, well, we really appreciate you being here and all the hard work you do to keep the water system running the way it does. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. The next is finance and pension, and we did not meet this month, but I do have the finance report that is in your packet for the monthly bills list, and that list is totaled $719,597.79, and I make a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. Any comments? Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We do not have a personnel report for this evening for professionals' reports. Do we have an engineer's report?
Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight.
Solicitor's report?
Thank you, no report either.
Thank you. And chief, police report?
Thank you, no report tonight.
Thank you. There's no president's report tonight. Is there any old business? Any new business? Any comments from the public?
No one signed up. Do you have the sign-in sheet?
No one was signed on.
This gentleman, I believe you arrived a little bit late. Just ask you to sign the sheet quickly. Just ask you to sign the sheet quickly.
If you could step up to the microphone and say your name and your address? Thank you.
My name is Doug Smith, and I live at 354 Maple Avenue. I have two things. First, Mr. Matozo, are there any other municipalities in this area that use groundwater?
There's a few systems that use combination groundwater, surface water. I believe we're the only system in the immediate area that is pretty much solely dependent on wells.
Who are the other ones who are using groundwater at all?
Doylestown Township, like, they have a mix of wells and surface water. Buckingham has some wells. I think they might mostly be wells, but I'm not too familiar with their system.
All right, so we're the only ones who have always ever been groundwater?
In the immediate area, yes, yeah.
Okay, just wondered.
Excuse me, I wouldn't say always ever been. In recent, more recent times, in the last several decades, a lot of communities in this area that were relying on just public water have hooked up to newer systems like the treatment plant at Forest Park, which uses surface water, and then that's distributed to Warrington, Plumstead, and other municipalities. And actually, township, too, right? Yeah.
That's surface water, right?
The pump was the big turning point.
Rather than groundwater?
Right, but what I'm saying is now, what Jeremy's saying is nowadays, we're the only ones that mostly use or exclusively use groundwater in our small system here in Doylestown Borough.
Yeah, until we drilled the wells back whenever it was.
Right, oh, that's true, yeah.
No one's ever done that before in this area, and I just wondered. That wasn't my question.
Okay. I'm sorry for clarifying your, not your question, but what is your question?
It's about code enforcement. I have a friend mine who lives, I think it's at 274 East Court Street, who was cited for three code violations and fined $1,000 each for those code violations. The first code violation was a piece of siding that came off his house. Now, he fixed that siding when he came back, he doesn't live here all the time. He came back and he fixed the siding, but the code enforcement officer didn't like it because it wasn't the same color. Well, it's the middle of winter, and you really can't paint. The other thing was that he didn't like the, pardon? HARB?
He was just showing me a photograph of the property.
Yeah. Well, the thing is, that piece that I just mentioned is the only thing, the only code violation that you can see from the street.
On the front of the house?
No, it's on the side. There is nothing missing from the front of the street. The side of the house has a shed on the back, and a piece of the siding came off of the shed. Before he left, he put a tarp over the shed roof to keep it waterproof. And evidently, the code enforcement officer didn't like that. You cannot see that, cannot see that from the street. You have to be in the middle of the backyard.
Has your friend contacted the borough regarding this?
Oh, yeah. Well, he hasn't contacted him since he got the fine, because now he's back in California. He did call me about it last week, two weeks ago, actually. My point is, from my personal standpoint, is that $1,000 per violation is incredibly, incredibly expensive and unjustified. Now, the siding that came off cost 20 bucks. The roof might have cost him $200 to fix. He fixed it himself. And the third thing was a pile of cuttings in the backyard that did not previously exist until the owner of the property next door cut down the hedge and asked if he could put the cuttings there. Now, you find my friend for cuttings that came from the next-door neighbors. Didn't ask, nothing.
It's very unusual to actually file fines. Typically, we're looking for compliance and not for what we'll have to do since the code enforcement officer is not here this evening. I'm not personally familiar with this.
Let me tell you what he said he did.
This case.
He said it was too long a time.
Too long a time, okay.
Because he put the original, not request, but the original code violation for the side of the house was after the storm we had in December, blew the siding off the house.
What we'll have to do is look up the specific details. Some of the things you're describing to me don't even sound necessarily like code violations, so I really can't respond specifically. But Karen Highland here, who is the supervisor for the code enforcement officer, will get your contact information. And I will also get a report on this to Borough Council tomorrow that basically lays out, and get you a report on exactly what transpired here and what the situation is, and then we can see where we go from there.
My point specifically is that this is an excessive fine.
I, again, I can't recall the last time we actually levy fines.
The borough doesn't fine directly. The borough files a citation after sending several notices.
I understand that.
So the next step then would be entering plea, and then it would be determined by the district court. So the borough, the borough files in the amount of the ordinance, and that's the typical procedure.
That's the maximum fine allowable by that ordinance.
Right.
$1,000 per violation. He was not notified of the hearing.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Smith, what I'd like to do is have us, as Mr. Davis said, let's investigate this, and we're going to get back to you, and we're going to inform all of council for this.
Okay.
We just have to look at the file and go through the whole and try to.
You can do that all you want. I'm telling you, it's too much money.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm telling you, it's too much money. And that's what I want to see my friend get, if you're going to fine him, don't fine him the maximum amount. That's insane. Insane.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you very much.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
And please, if you could get your contact information or email to Karen, she can follow up with you.
Did you write a contact information on the?
I just have the street address here.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like to leave an email.
We can get an email address. We do not have an executive session this evening, so I would make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kinney. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and help yourself to cookies, please.
You don't want to take them home, do you?